All right, good morning. It is Wednesday, December 10th, 2025. I will call to order the Shelby County Board of Commissioners Committee meeting, and we will start with Public Works today. If we could have the first item read, please.
Good morning. Item one is an ordinance, third reading, ordinance approving an intra-local agreement between the cities of Millington, Tennessee, and Lakeland, Tennessee, and the town of Arlington, Tennessee, and Shelby County, Tennessee, authorizing the Shelby County Fire Department to provide emergency ambulance services in these municipalities. Sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr.
Thank you. I have moved this item. I don't know that Commissioner Sugarman has seconded the item. Good morning, Chief Benson.
Good morning, Commissioner. This is the final installment of an item you guys have heard twice already. Just allows us to go into contract with these municipalities to provide ambulance service.
All right, I appreciate it. Seeing no commissioners in the queue, we'll go ahead and take this one to a vote. All right, it looks like all commissioners have voted. If we can tally the results.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Wright, and Bradford. We have three eye votes.
Thank you. This item will go down with a favorable recommendation. Happy holidays, Chief. All right, if we could read item number two.
Item two is a resolution approving a contract with A&amp;J True Touch Cleaning Services, LLC, to provide carpet, vinyl, VCT, and brick floor maintenance for Shelby County Support Services in various Shelby County buildings on an as requested, as needed, and where needed basis commencing upon execution through June 30th, 2026, in the amount not to exceed $85,000, with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods upon the same terms and conditions. This item requires expenditure of FY 2026 general funds in an amount not to exceed $85,000. Sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr.
Thank you. This item has been moved by Commissioner Sugarman. I have seconded. Dr. Austin, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Austin, Administrative Support Services. This item is to contract for floor cleaning services with the vendor A&amp;J True Trust. True Touch, excuse me. This is a traditional services that we offer within our department through the various buildings in Shelby County. So, we went through the competitive process. There were 44 vendors, in which the bid was issued two, three responded. One was deemed non-responsive. We went with A&amp;J True Touch. We work with this vendor in the past. They provide great services, and we are looking forward to continuing the services with this vendor.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioner Sugarman. Planning, Transportation, and Codes. If we could read the first item.
Thank you, Chairman. Happy holidays.
Item one is a resolution approving a contract between Shelby County Government
Happy holidays.
I have just one question. Is this a local vendor?
and the Works, Inc., in the amount of $254,660.25 for community engagement services for
Yes, it is a LOSB. There was a 20% LOSB go, and they met that at 100% because they're doing it themselves.
a Mid-South Comprehensive Climate Action Plan as outlined in RFQ Number 24-002-16.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question, Commissioner Sugarman. Thank you. All right, seeing no other commissioners in the queue, let's take this item to a vote. All right, if all commissioners have had the opportunity to vote, let's tally the results.
The term of this contract will commence upon the execution and continue through June 30th, 2026, with the option to renew one additional one-year terms. This item requires
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Wright, and Bradford. We have three eye
expenditure of FY 2026 grant funds in the amount not to exceed $254,660.25. Sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr.
votes.
Thank you. That concludes Public Works, and we have about 60 seconds before we'll Thank you. This item was moved by Commissioner Sugarman. I have seconded the item. Good morning. hear the next committee.
Good morning. Lee Huffman Meyer with Division of Planning and Development, Office of Sustainability and Resilience. This item is related to the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant that y'all received the funds for in 2024, and this specific contract is related to community engagement services to identify community and resident priorities, which will help us create the goals and recommendations included in the Comprehensive Climate Action Plan.
All right, thank you. Seeing no commissioners in the queue, let's take this item to a vote. All right, if all commissioners have had the opportunity to vote, let's tally the results.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman and Bradford. We have two eye votes.
Thank you. That item will go down with a favorable recommendation. We can read item number two.
Item two is a resolution approving the purchase of furniture with Spaces Group in an amount not to exceed $103,195.21 for the purpose of providing office furniture and equipment at the Division of Planning and Development offices located at 125 North Main Street. This item requires expenditure of FY 2026 enterprise funds in an amount not to exceed $103,195.21. Sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr.
Thank you. This item was moved by Commissioner Sugarman. I have seconded the item. Good morning.
Good morning. Nadia Logan-Robinson, Deputy Director, Division of Planning and Development. This item seeks your approval for the purchase and installation of furniture at our offices at 125 North Main in City Hall. The funds are budgeted in FY 26 enterprise funds budget. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Sugarman.
Good morning. Happy holidays. Good morning. I have just one question. Is this a local vendor?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Seeing no other commissioners in the queue, let's take this item to a vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman and Bradford. We have two eye votes.
Thank you. That item will go down with a favorable recommendation. We can read item number two.
Item two is a resolution approving the purchase of furniture with Spaces Group in an amount not to exceed $103,195.21 for the purpose of providing office furniture and equipment at the Division of Planning and Development offices located at 125 North Main Street. This item requires expenditure of FY 2026 enterprise funds in an amount not to exceed $103,195.21. Sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr.
Thank you. This item was moved by Commissioner Sugarman. I have seconded the item. Good morning.
Good morning. Nadia Logan-Robinson, Deputy Director, Division of Planning and Development. This item seeks your approval for the purchase and installation of furniture at our offices at 125 North Main in City Hall. The funds are budgeted in FY 26 enterprise funds budget. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Sugarman.
Good morning. Happy holidays. Good morning. I have just one question. Is this a local vendor?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Seeing no other commissioners in the queue, let's take this item to a vote. All right, if all commissioners have had the opportunity to vote, let's tally the results.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Mills, Wright, and Bradford. We have four eye votes.
Thank you. This item will go down with a favorable recommendation, and that concludes Land Use, Planning, Transportation, and Codes. Next committee will start at 8:45. All right, I've got 8:45. I'm going to call to order committee 13 audit. I do have a public comment card on this item, so I think what we'll do is, once we get it read into the record and properly before us, Mr. Herbert Shabazz, I'll have you come up and speak after we get it on the record, and then we'll get into further discussion. All right? So, if we could read item number one under audit, and I see Commissioner Whaley has just walked in, so as soon as we get it read, I'm going to turn it over to him to manage.
Item one is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Shelby County, Tennessee, requesting the county clerk of Shelby County, Tennessee, Wanda Halbert, comply with lawful requests for reports, data, and information from county retained auditors and the comptroller for the state of Tennessee necessary to complete the annual comprehensive financial report and prevent further financial harm to Shelby County, Tennessee. Sponsored by Vice Chairman David C. Bradford Jr.
Okay, this item was moved by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Wright. We do have one comment card. I'm going to take that up before we go to discussion on the item. Herbert Shabazz, sorry, apologize. Thank you. Come on up, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Just make sure to press the little button on the bottom of the microphone. There you go.
I'm Herbert Shabazz. I'm a taxpayer of Shelby County, Tennessee. I live at 625 Stevens Place. I addressed the council at one of the retirement board's committee meetings about a month ago, requesting that Shelby County Sheriff Philip E. Coon and Shelby County Attorney Brian A. Coon, former attorneys, to come before this board to answer questions about funds that misappropriated as it relates to my retirement. As a former employee at Shepherd State Community College for over 10 years, through my investigation, I'm here to publicly accuse them of fraud, misrepresentation of my funds, and they need to come before this committee. I asked the committee, and I'm here to get a response on whether or not they're going to request that Mr. Brian Coon, the former county attorney who stole my money, and Mr. Philip Coon, his brother who stole my money, to come before this committee, this board, to address these matters. I need a response. If the board is not willing to do that, I'm asking the board for a criminal referral to U.S. Attorney Pam Bundy, not the local U.S. Attorney, but straight to the U.S. Attorney's Office in Washington, D.C., a criminal referral. I have all the information, all the evidence that I need to present to the authorities on this matter. So, you all going to send for Brian Coon and Philip Coon, or are you all willing to do the criminal referral to the U.S. Attorney Pam Bundy? I need to know an answer today before the end of the year, so anyone can give me an answer. You don't want to position it, give me an answer. It came before the board, retirement board.
All right, thank you very much. Yep, Commissioner Brooks.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I do not have an answer, Mr. Shabazz, but what I do want to say is that I do not want you to think that I'm ignoring you. I do recall you being here with this issue. For me, I would need additional information in writing, you know, dates, names, and issues, and outline that for me so that I can have a start to see what process we need to involve to get some resolution for you.
Sounds great, Commissioner. I will present that information to you.
You can email that to me if you like, or if you have copies, you can make copies and then mail them, whichever is best for you.
I try to email them. If not, then I will give them to you before the week's out.
Okay, that's fine.
I appreciate your time, consideration on this matter. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shabazz. Well, back to the item. Commissioner Bradford, did you want to give us a brief overview before we take it any further?
Yeah, I'll speak to this briefly. So, I had, as we all have been getting, had some complaints about the clerk's office, and so I reached out to the mayor's office to see what could be done, and then the mayor made me aware that the third-party auditor that has been trying to work with the clerk's office has not been receiving the information they need to complete their task. And so, working with the mayor's office, came up with this resolution to hopefully get this in front of us so that the third-party auditor could get the information they need and move forward. I don't know if there's anybody from the mayor's office that wants to speak to this, and then obviously I see the clerk here today, so I'm sure she'll have some discussion as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, good morning, Director Schombom.
Good morning, Danielle Schombom, Deputy Director.
Ms. Chairman, corner.
Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brooks.
I just need some additional information from the sponsor regarding this. I need to understand what is his intent and what is his expected outcome, and then I need to know if the mayor's office is also sponsoring this resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Bradford.
Yes, thank you. Happy to address those items. The intent of this is to get the information to the third-party auditor so that they can complete their work, and yes, I believe the mayor's office is on board with this request. I believe the mayor has requested these items on behalf of the auditor and has not received them, and so they thought putting this in front of the commission might grease the skids, if you will, to make this move a little quicker.
So, the mayor's office is a co-sponsor? Because I'm asking because they're not listed as a sponsor.
I don't believe the mayor's office can co-sponsor items before us, but I did work with them in order to develop this resolution, so they are supportive of it.
Okay, well, let's hear from the administration. Let's hear from the administration on it. Deputy Director Schombom.
Good morning, Danielle Schombom, Deputy Director, Administration and Finance. As noted by Commissioner Bradford, you all know that we are in the midst of our audit with a deadline of December 31st. We are doing our best to adhere to that deadline. As part of the audit, all the elected official offices are elected. That audit this year is being conducted by Banks, Finley, and White. Chris Hearn, partner at Banks, Finley, White, is here to speak on their behalf as well. We are asking through this resolution for the clerk's office to be responsive to audit requests, access to the BIS system, the state BIS system, to obtain detailed list of transactions, and a designated point of contact who can respond without the clerk's approval. It's our understanding that sometimes there are items available, but everything must be run through the clerk, and she has been unwilling to release items. So, we would like to have a point of contact, either CAO Mike Williams or Accounting Manager Linda Goodwin, to be able to work directly with the auditors, and I'll let Mr. Hearn speak directly about the issues that they've encountered.
Okay, Ms. Hearn.
Good morning.
Oh, sorry.
Good morning. Christopher Hearn, partner with Banks, Finley, and White CPAs. So, the issues that we're having is, number one, the most important piece of information we need for the audit is the annual financial statements, and so, to this day, we have not been provided with any annual financial statements, and it is state law that all government officers have to have their books and records closed within 60 days of the close of the fiscal year, and I mean, we're in December now and hadn't received anything. So, we are asking for direct access to the BIS system now. The BIS system has all of the transaction data in there for the year, and we would take that transaction data and hopefully be able to trace those transactions back through the trustee's office and use that information to assist in creating a set of annual financial statements if she doesn't have any. Next thing is, we also need bank reconciliations for the year, and we have not been provided with bank reconciliation for the year. So, those are two really important pieces of this audit because...
with us, and they're working on, and we're getting it, but there's just no movement here for the information that we need from the clerk's office.
Okay, and I'm curious to the sponsor, did you try to reach out to the clerk's office before agreeing to sponsor this?
That is a good question, Commissioner Mills. I did not.
Okay, I would, curious to see if you could have been a go-between, considering the environment that things have been in. Those are my only two questions. I'll be interested to hear more on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no one else on the screen, so, Commissioner Wright.
Sorry, thank you, Ms. Chair. I do have a question for the county attorney's office, if someone would like to help me with this question. When the commission makes a request of this nature, this is a request, as far as I'm aware.
The project is required of the government, and producing those records is also a requirement of the office. It is more or less just a request from you all to comply with those requirements.
And do we have, Attorney Smith, do we have any additional powers or additional options that would somehow require these documents or this information to be presented?
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office. This remains the extent of the authority here to make this request of the county clerk's office.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Wright. Seeing nothing else, I think, Madam Clerk, we can take this item to a vote.